Good evening, welcome to the City of Shelton Council Meeting, October 21st, 2025. Anyone in the audience who has amplifying headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Not seeing any of this, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, eternal and eternal.
Mary, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Bush?
Here.
Councilmember Sterns?
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore?
Here.
Mayor Nisco?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman?
Here.
Councilmember Sapp?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
Thank you, Mary. Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? Interim City Manager, any late changes?
None.
All right. Does the council have any board reports to share? All right. Does the council had a chance to review the consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, the second, to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the council invites the public to make public comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council and not individual council members. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruption of the meeting. If unreasonable disruptive conduct continues, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Mary, anyone sign up for general public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Nellie Peebles.
City council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As the Southern District resident of Shelton, I come before you to raise awareness about the growing decline that we're witnessing throughout our mother town. I know many of you are aware of the homelessness crisis affecting our community, but what we are facing is far greater than a lack of housing. It is a drug and mental health crisis that is spread across our state and now deeply affects our town. Fentanyl alone claimed 3,137 lives to Oregon in 2024, an average of 261 people per month. Even one death is too many. We cannot continue turning a blind eye to what is happening in our own backyard. According to the Department of Health, fentanyl deaths doubled from 827 deaths in 2019 to 1,619 in 2021. This came with Inslee helping pass State versus Blake, which eliminated felony charges for direct possession and directly correlates to the rise in deaths seen that year. With the rise in casualties and homelessness, we are also seeing an increase in unsafe situations where the hardworking tax pays citizens a shill. Let me be clear, my intention is not to put anyone down. I believe every person deserves compassion and a chance to rebuild their life. However, we must also acknowledge the reality of what is happening on our streets. Families, business owners, and children are being directly impacted. Homes near the library have experienced that. I personally have been approached inappropriately by some employee under the influence outside of my former home. I have witnessed overdoses in front of the library while it was open to the public. Drug paraphernalia and trash are less scattered around areas that should be safe for families, like the encampment across from the yacht club. As a mother and a small business owner, I no longer feel comfortable taking my child to the library, a place that should be refuge for learning, not an unsafe environment. The library is not and should not become a homeless shelter. Likewise, the area near the post office, Rower Park, has become unsafe. I know several incidences of theft and intimidation. These are not isolated experiences. They are a growing pattern that cannot be ignored. Evergreen treatment services proximity to these areas is also contributing to the concentration of issues town to town. While I understand the importance of providing treatment, the location and management of such facilities must be carefully evaluated to protect both the patients and the broader community. I do not plan to have all the answers, but I am asking those in positions of authority to take serious immediate action. Shelton deserves to be clean, safe, and a welcoming town for all its residents. Other Washington cities such as Linden, which is one of many, have managed to maintain safety and pride in their communities, surely we can do the same. Let's work together to restore Shelton to a beautiful and secure town that it can and should be. If you want to see my results, well, thank you for listening and take you to our office.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dwayne Wilson. Dwayne, you have, your presentation is for Bluegrass, is it for Bluegrass?
Yes.
Oh, you can, you get more, you get more than three minutes because you have a presentation unless you want to talk about something else.
Well, we can tell presentation. Yeah, you're good.
Okay, next is Kathy McDowell.
Good evening, council. Glad to be here tonight. My mother used to always say, the squeaky wheel gets the oil, well, we have a squeaky wheel in the town and we got some oils. I am coming to talk to you again about handicap spots on Railroad Avenue, desperately needed. I had to go down to the first, first and railroad the other day and I had to park clear of my knees, I had to walk all that way. For a normal person, that's okay, but I have walking issues. Then there's the sidewalks, cracks in them, and those need to be repaired soon because someone, I've heard of several people falling and not saying anything, anybody, but one of these days, someone will fall and will hurt themselves and then you'll figure out what to do with that. But basically, the handicap spots and the sidewalks are absolutely a necessity to get going on those. Also, thank you for restriping Coles Street. I love it and it is so nice and wide and we're not having to avoid trucks that get stuck out, so thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ian Jewitt.
No elegant speeches, just kind of a State of the Union. Being we talked about sidewalks, Kathy did, you guys have heard about sidewalks about, what, six times now? At what point in time are we going to do something about our sidewalks, our curb painting, the weeds, the distressed look of our town, and then just, you know, a little pressure washer that would work wonders? We've had conversations about study sessions about being proactive versus a complaint-based response to what we have going on. We need to push that. We need four members of our city council to direct the manager, then to direct the police chief to go after this as a proactive approach, and I'm talking about a hard proactive approach. We have a, so let's talk about Coda a little bit. So far, so I did a public records request and I'm going to do another one. So far, we're up to about $70,000 of what it cost us to do Coda Street. $70,000 that we don't have to experiment when anybody with a ruler and a measurement and a transit should have been able to figure out that it wouldn't have worked right out of the gate. Let's, let's reach out, let's do a little bit of research, let's, let's reach out to the mayor of Longview, Spencer Verdoe. He basically had a posting on there about how they were able to clean up their parks for normal family use. Let's just not abandon parks. There are several people here that sit on the parks boards. Let's save all the parks, not just some of them. The auto mall over Olympia got cleaned out. Where do you think those people go? Do we have anybody that watches the social media of other areas and figure out when a camp closes and where those individuals are going to end up? We've got a dozen cameras in my business. I see new faces every single day and there was two camps that popped up that had the police department help me move some people along and then the city went and cleaned them up, so thank you for cleaning them up, but we have to do that over and over and over. We have stores that are closing. Why do we have stores that are closing? Because there's no enforcement, there's no punishment. We have a judge that lowers bail on people that are running for council because they can't, they can't finance their bail, so he lowers it. I mean, I don't get it. What do you, so are they going to lower mine? I'd spend $2,000 fighting for an issue that I got charged with that, if y'all know, got thrown out after they tried to offer me up team plea deals and I just said, no, let's go to court. Oh, okay, we'll drop it. Right now, there's a group of us that are working with our fire department so that we can get some actual true data on how much Narcan is used, how much it costs to roll a call. Anybody know what wall time is? Wall time is when you pick up a case and all the ambulances are full, all the hospitals are redirecting you. There was a time last year when we had one ambulance in all of Mason County available, so let's work on that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
That's all that we have signed up, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next, we have a presentation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Councilmember Lindsay Sapp is going to read that for us tonight.
Whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among women in the United States and remains a leading cause of cancer-related death, and whereas early detection through regular screenings and increased awareness significantly improves survival rates and outcomes, and whereas ongoing research, education, and community support are essential to advancing treatment options and providing hope to those affected, and whereas the City of Shelton recognizes the courage and strength of breast cancer survivors, honors the memory of those lost, and supports the families and caregivers who stand beside them, and whereas the Karen Hillburn Breast and Cervical Cancer Fund is a local dedicated nonprofit organization serving women in Mason County by providing clinical support, education, and resources relating to breast and cervical cancer, and whereas during the month of October, individuals, organizations, and communities across the nation unite to raise awareness, promote prevention, and support those impacted by breast cancer. Now, therefore, the city, or the Shelton City Council does hereby proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and in the City of Shelton, and encourages all community members to participate in activities and initiatives that promote awareness, education, and support for those affected by breast cancer.
Thank you, Councilmember Sapp. Kelly, make some comments.
Hi, my name is Kelly. I'm with the Karen Hillburn Cancer Fund and we are in our 21st year of supporting Mason County residents with their cancer-related medical expenses. And as with most cancers, early detection is essential for a positive outcome with diagnosis of breast cancer, so we're very appreciative of the proclamation and as always, we are appreciative of your support as well, so thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have an August financial stats report from interim Finance Director, Terrence Ness, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Cody's going to bring up the presentation, but as I've always been doing, I'll just update you a little bit on our long-term investments, which our U.S. Bank is holding 5.7 million and our local government investment pool account is just short of 20 million and it's, the interest rate is still holding above 4%. It's currently at 4.17, so it is dropping. I believe last month I reported at 4.3. So with those, the government dropping rates, we will be seeing further rate drops in, in the LGIP especially. So now that, so, so tonight I'm bringing you the August monthly financial report for 2025 and this represents 60% of the year. And as you can see, we are, our revenues are performing much stronger than we had originally anticipated. This, from July of 2025, we increased the variance by 500,000 and so now our unreserved fund balance increased to 3.4 million where we originally budgeted the fund balance at 1.9. So we continue to increase the revenue and, but also our, as you will see in just a couple pages, that our expenses are also going down about 500, but 500,000. So on page two, which, okay, Cody was telling me it's a little bit delayed, so, so on page two, we have the general fund overview of revenue and this shows all the revenues sources that we collect for the city and again, we, our 2025 estimated actuals are coming in higher, approximately about a million over what we projected for the budget of 2025. So it's still, and it's, the revenues aren't just a one, one revenue source that we're seeing these variances, it's pretty much all across the board for the revenue sources. So there's just not, not one clear differential that we're seeing. At the bottom in the chart for the estimated general fund revenues, the number one source of revenue that we collect is sales and use taxes at 21% and our charges for goods and services is at a very close second at 21% also, and then the third is property taxes at 18%. Now, page three, we have our general fund overview of expenditures and again, this is where it's showing we have about, we're spending about 500,000 less than what we have budgeted. So currently through August, we have about, we have spent about 58%, which is the 9.9 million to what we have budgeted at 17 million. And then at the graph on the bottom of that page, we have, our biggest expense in the general fund is our wages and that's at 36% and then at 30% is professional services. And on page four, we have the general fund year to year and for the revenue for the 2025 estimated actual, we're projecting about 16.9 million and that's, that's more than what the 2024 actual is. And then it's, it's more, it's about 237,000 more than what we have budgeted for 2025. The expenses, down at the bottom, the total expenditures, we're showing estimated actual at 16.5 million and it's about 1 million over the 2024 actual, but it's about 500 less than what we budgeted for 2025. And then on page five, we have the general fund month to month and you can see the total revenues for the year 2023, 24, and 25, all through the month of August. It shows that it's increased about a million for each of those years. And then the expenditures are kind of the same, they increased about 500,000 each year through the month of August. Then I'm going to skip to page seven, which is our fund balances and just showing our 2025 estimated fund balance is at almost, almost at 24 million for all citywide funds. Most of them, you can see that there is a change, you know, like a negative change, but that just basically means, you know, we're using fund balance in those funds. As you can see, the general fund will increase by about 350,000, but a lot of those, the drawdowns in those funds are basically due to projects. Then at the bottom, we have the citywide FTE by fund. To the left, there's the, all the general fund. We increased the vacancies by one position and that was within the police department in the, in the administrative department. And so now our total vacancies is at six and a half. And the other city funds, which is our utilities and street, stayed at four, so our total vacancies is at 10 and a half and that is another reason why our expenditures are lower.
Question, we were kind of holding back on utility funds and road funds until the TBD passed, correct? That's kind of why we didn't fill those positions?
Yes, we left some positions open in case the TBD didn't pass that we could move some employees over or have them apply for other jobs at the city, so we're currently filling some of those positions. There's a stormwater position open and two at the wastewater plant, so if anybody's interested, they could go to the city's webpage and go look at the, the jobs page in the HR department and you'll see those postings up there.
Thank you.
So then pages eight through 12 is just our citywide overview of revenues and expenditures for all funds. It just gives you a little bit more detail, but at a rolled up version, so. And with that, if anybody else has any questions?
Questions or comments? We're still going to be using any fund balance for '26 probably.
'26, yes.
Probably still about a million, probably to.
It's showing about 1.1 million right now.
So not quite out of the woods yet, we still have a three-year, three-year problem.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions for Terri? Thank you, Terri. I'd just like to mention that we had another state audit, exit interview on Friday where we had another clean audit and Terri's, her staff did a wonderful job, the auditors were very impressed with them and also thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
All right. We have an LTAC presentation from Dedriff with the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor Nisco, council members. Thank you for having me back to talk with you this time of the third quarter, visitor services. Much of this will be the same as what you were last time, so I'm going to hit the highlights so you can get to your business. As we pull up the presentation here, for those of you who aren't aware, the Chamber hosts visitor services at the caboose downtown as well as in our office auxiliary and then a hood support. So the hood support office is funded largely by the county LTAC dollars. We have a city LTAC contract for the caboose in downtown, but we'll talk to you about the overall program so you can see how it all fits together. So on the front page, you'll see a photo that Amy Cooper got from Downtown Merchants at the car show. One of the things that we've been trying to do is extend hours so that the caboose isn't just open when we're contracted to be open, which is eight to five, but also when there are special events. So during the car show, we're able to have that open. We've had some security features like smart deadbolt so folks can ring, we can give them a little access, and then we've altered our staffing to make sure that when we have community events that we're drawing folks from out of town, we actually have someone in person provide more of a concierge service than help yourself with your situation. So great photo of downtown being active in this. On the next slide, you'll see our numbers from the hood support visitor center, mostly for mass and passes. Those bottom numbers for visitors represent both locations. You will see almost a 45% decrease in visitors in the third quarter this year over last year and that is largely due to Bear Gulch Fire and folks that rearranged their summer plans, either for concerns about air quality or because they weren't able to access the recreational locations that they hoped. The good thing is that by maintaining open to serve folks that were still coming to the area, we are able to redirect them to other services, other activities, and we're fully posting with our partners at the park service and the forest service to keep that information updated. On the next page there, you will see a sort of real quick look of the hood now visitor center. We keep track of where folks are coming in from. In-state, it tends to be a lot of the Seattle area coming to visit the Olympic National Park and out-of-state, we saw Texas, Illinois, New York, and Florida, and then British Columbia and France were the notable ones for the third quarter coming into that area. On the next page there, you will see our Google landing page for hood support. Again, you're seeing about the same decrease year over year. Again, Bear Gulch Fire hit hood support particularly hard, but we are still seeing really high satisfaction ratings. We like to see those five-star ratings from visitors to the visitor center, so if you visit or if you have folks coming to the area and they stop in and talk with one of our fabulous volunteers or staff, encourage them to go in and hit that five-star review. The next page there is the Facebook page, Chamber manages, again, no lodging tax dollars go to that, but it is part of what we do, is sharing things that are happening in the community. Using the park is always super popular and of course during third quarter, news about what was happening with Bear Gulch was the big tech, people wanted to know if roads were closed, what activities they could get to. And outside of Facebook and the work there, we spent an enormous amount of time updating Google, which seems odd, but the Chamber is actually a national partner with, or grow with Google. And what we were finding is that folks were writing at our visitor center and saying, I didn't know that such and such was closed, I don't know how to get to here, and so we were able to go in as a partner, update those locations in light of tend to mark that it's temporarily closed or provide updates and notifications, which was helpful, hopefully not only for visitors, but also again for the staff and volunteers who are running these locations. And then next page I think is the Google landing page for the caboose, which has a shiny new picture up there, again, thanks to the volunteers that put in immense amount of time updating the exterior. As you've heard in my second quarter report, we also saw quite a bit of interior updates that the Chamber did during that, flooring, we had local contractors working on that project and some amazing signage. So if you have another recent, stop then take a look, you will see that the decrease in traffic to the Google page for Shelton was less of a decrease than hood support and again, that's reflected in the activity that we saw. Folks are looking for what? The visitor center, caboose, attraction, and actually attraction takes spots one and four, which I found interesting, world-class keywords, so maintaining that as an icon of our cultural heritage and historic monument within our downtown core is really important to us, the visitor center. And lastly, I think, is a quick overview of the folks that we had visiting the caboose itself. So again, a lot of folks coming from the north, but we saw out-of-state from California, Idaho, Hawaii, and Oregon, and then again, making sure that we were open for things like the downtown car show and the Olympus rally, which brought in hopefully some new visitors to enjoy our restaurants and our retailers and our boutiques. We do have limited lodging within the city limits, but the goal is always to keep them as close as possible so that as they're out and about having their vacation, they're utilizing those services and contributing to our local economy. So with that, have you saved any questions?
Question for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation is for Bluegrass, for Dwayne Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor Nisco, Shelton City Council. If you don't mind, I'll just read this that I sent to Mary, so it's got lots of facts on it. So Christmas Town Kwanis hosted our 20th successful Bluegrass from the Forest Bluegrass Festival, July 12th to the 14th at South Bateson Youth Soccer Park. This year, approximately 1,800 people attended for a concert featuring eight nationally and regionally celebrated Bluegrass groups. 278 attendees stayed at local motels and Airbnbs, an additional 40 guests stayed locally with friends and family, and approximately 265 campers stayed onsite at South Bateson Youth Soccer Park. 440 Bluegrass fans traveled 50 miles or more and 90 from out-of-state. This year, we had travelers from Hawaii, New Orleans, California, Texas, Nebraska, Tennessee, Washington DC, and Oregon. Folks ate at local restaurants, bought groceries and fuel, and shopped in other businesses. Christmas Town Kwanis members are frequently asked about recreational and cultural attraction in the area. Christmas Town Kwanis would like to thank the City of Shelton for their ongoing support of Bluegrass from the Forest and other Christmas Town Kwanis projects. We've already started planning for next year and hope the City of Shelton will continue to support our endeavors, so any questions?
Question for Dwayne.
Just a thank you for keeping the cultural tradition and the musical tradition of Shelton alive and keeping it going with the Christmas Town Kwanis. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. If you like acoustic music, it's the place B that's for you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
All right. We have, we have no business items tonight, we have some action items. Our first action item is interim Community Economic Development Director Jason Doze has information for us about a comprehensive plan update.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, as you're aware, the city's been in the process of updating the comprehensive plan for about a year and a half now. I was before you at your last study session, we went over several more elements and we're still working on those, we're at the final draft stage. Pretty, in my opinion, benign ask tonight, more of a formality, just asking that the council approve a resolution, which I've attached to the report, that it would authorize us as staff, once we get a final draft together, to submit to Department of Ecology for the required 60-day review. And as I alluded to at the last meeting. And as I alluded to at the last meeting, that's just, it's a required review by the state. They basically blast our comprehensive plan out to all their agencies. Everybody's checking their boxes to make sure we're fulfilling the requirements of state law. And then it would come back to us with any recommended changes and that's when we would bring it forward to the council for final review, public hearings, that sort of thing. And then, do you have any questions?
Mary, anyone sent a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Ever reading a resolution number 1389-0625?
Resolution number 1389-0625. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing city staff to submit a notice of intent to adopt the City of Shelton comprehensive plan update.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 1389-0625 as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
Just wanted to thank Jason and the staff for hosting an SCJ alliance and our, the whole process for 16 months and the inclusiveness that the city showed and, and the staff showed for bringing in all, all the voices of Shelton. So thank you so much for all your hard work and it's really great to finalize this and it was a really great study session, a two-hour study session last night. So, I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. It, it helps a lot, the volunteers we had to come in and sit on the comprehensive plan committee that the council appointed. I mean, they were great, had great input all along the way and, you know, we had a few hiccups and false starts here and there, but they took it all in stride and, you know, thought that there's processes you can expect.
Well, I'm glad that we delivered a, a proposal that was forward-looking and also included everybody. So I just wanted to make, make sure that you understand my appreciation for the process.
Any other questions? All right. We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution number 1389-0625 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next is an ordinance related to compost procurement. Stormwater technician Patrick Hoffman has details for us.
Evening, council members. Mr. Mayor, a little review who I didn't meet at the October 7th meeting. My name is Pat. I am the new stormwater technician for the City of Shelton. So on October 7th, I presented in detail about the compost procurement ordinance, which is ordinance 2033-0825. And a quick summary of what prompted the original drafting of this ordinance, Washington State Legislature enacted House Bill 1799, which requires the City of Shelton to adopt two RCWs, both related to compost procurement in the city. And we are necessitated to have an ordinance for this because we have organic material collection through Mason County Garden and recycle. Nothing has changed regarding the ordinance since my presentation. I just want to see if there's any additional questions or anything like that.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone sent a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Ever reading a resolution number or ordinance number 2033-0825?
Ordinance number 2033-0825. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter 8.08 Shelton Municipal Code to add a compost procurement requirement with reliance on RCW 43.19A.150 and RCW 43.19A.120.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2033-0825 as presented.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
Just another comment on welcome and thank you so much for making sure that we are doing the best we can to recycle and to reuse and to put materials that have been deemed unnecessary as back into our, our city and make it necessary again. So thank you so much for doing the best we can for the environment of Shelton.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion in a second to adopt ordinance number 2033-0825 as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. Our last action item, Assistant Public Works Director Aaron Nix has a resolution for us about crosstown trail design.
Mayor, council, thank you again. As we discussed in our last meeting, this, we're moving forward with grant money that we received for the crosstown trail. That's the phase from Wallace Elan, from Elan Park, I'm sorry, all the way up to 101. There's a picture in the scope, if you'd like to take a picture of it or take a look at it. It's about, I believe it's about one and a half miles. Yet, yet years, we're going to actually physically design this project. We're going to do some survey. We're going to design basically the base pathway as well as a lighting plan. As I mentioned at our last meeting, landscaping, we're going to move in the direction of doing native landscaping, just because of the water usage that if we wanted non-native stuff, we'd be watering them. Candidly, they die continuously. So it's, that's really the direction we want to go and it's going to save us a significant amount of money in that we won't have the irrigation in support of whatever we do. So, nothing has changed, you guys. We're just ready, ready and willing to go on this project. Desire is early, let's say mid-next year, we will have a design. In addition, we're going to be doing significant outreach with the community to have discussions about this. I will tell you, I went and walked it. I can't tell you how many people have come out of their homes and said, "What are you doing?" So I think it's really important that we do have that exchange. So with that approval, we can proceed with this. As I mentioned in our last meeting, Jordan Crumples, our parks supervisor, is going to be managing this project, but I will be assisting her as we proceed with the design. So unless there's any other questions, we'd like to get moving on this.
Right. Mary, anyone sent a public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Ever reading a resolution number 1403-0925?
Resolution number 1403-0925. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works on-call consultant roster per order to provide design on the crosstown trail project, Phase One, with color associated name.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 1403-0925 as written.
Second.
All right. Comments or questions?
Just looking forward to it. We've been waiting such a long time and I'm so looking forward to making the rails of our paths the trails to our future. So thank you so much.
Absolutely, sir. Just, just so that you know, I talked with the grant agent Phase Two. Phase Two is from Wallace Elan to the Marina. They're ready to go on that. So as soon as I get this in Jordan's hands, we're going to proceed with scoping out Phase Two. And that again, is a design for that piece. So ultimately, ideally the end of next year, we have shovel-ready projects, shop with our CEO of all the grant agencies to go through construction.
Are we still looking for agencies to pull out the, the steel and try to recycle that?
With, as you know, the cost recovery with regard to the steel did not meet the expectations that the previous director originally thought. We're going to, we're going to self-perform this and we're going to do an experiment to see how long it takes, at least a small section of it, to get rid of it and then us basically haul it and get the money for those resources. Next year, or excuse me, probably mid-next year is the hope, if not sooner. And then we will expand that once we're able to determine that we can handle that and make that happen. So, we need to self-perform. There's just not enough money coming back to hire contractors.
We have issues right now, difficulty mowing it and keeping the brush down because the tracks are a problem with, with the mowers. So the tracks need to come up, the ties need to come out, so we can maintain the area until the trail improvements, we're going to be under design, but we need to get grants for the actual construction. So it's still some time out, but it will make it more walkable in the meantime also.
We have been maintaining it, you guys, recently. You'll notice that there's been flail motors and those type, flail mowers out there. It's done right now, so we were going to try to keep up on that. Again, it's going to be very helpful. We have rails out because we have to deal with that as getting machinery.
How does that work? Because if we're going all the way to the freeway, we're going to be going through the county. So are they going to partner with us on that?
We'll have discussions with them. I mean, ultimately, there's going to be, have to get right-of-way evements, those kinds of things. Oh, excuse me, we already have it.
Yeah.
I think, I'm pretty confident, we own all the way to the highway already.
I think we do.
So we're good. In that, we'll talk to them about it. Yes, it's in their jurisdiction, but it's part of our, even the City of Shelton. So they'll at least have in the know, ideally we did their pros plan or their comp plans because then they can help us get money for that too. So we will exhaust that and begin, begin designing.
Great. Is there any other questions? All right. We have a motion in a second to adopt resolution number 1403-0925 as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, council.
All right. Jay, interim city manager, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, I do. May, so this weekend, Jay here is public works director, acting city manager, that we're going to have a rain event this weekend, couple inches, Friday, Saturday. And so it's our first large rain event of the season. And so I just wanted to make sure that people knew that if leaves wash up onto a storm drain inlet, it's okay to clean those off and put them in your recycling bin if you have one of them. That helps us. If, if the water starts getting a little deep though, you can call the non-emergency number if you think it's going to run into someone's house, that sort of thing. If, if it's not, if nobody's in peril and you haven't seen anybody help to unblock the blockage, do a MyCivic application or request. So the MyCivic app is on the city's webpage. You can access it from there. It's called Report an Issue. On your cell phone though, you can also download the Shelton app and it's a wheel. You can look at the council meetings, you can do all sorts of things on there, but Report an Issue is on there. You can go to code enforcement, you can go to public works sewer, water, storm drainage, that sort of thing. So very helpful for us if you use the app, be our eyes and ears, please. The next thing is Aaron Nix here worked with a contractor to install gas shut-off valves. We've got about half of them put in today. This is natural gas in city buildings. We didn't have seismic shut-off valves on the buildings, so we got a bunch put in at the public works yard. We have this building that's going to happen and then we have the library and then each wastewater plant also. So what the valve does is when it's, when there's a large earthquake, there's a ball that shakes in there. It has to be greater than a five magnitude and it has to be going up in amplification. So the ball will roll and it will actually shut the, the gas off. It's really easily resettable also. Typically trains and heavy trucks and that sort of thing won't shut off these seismic valves. So really important for the city assets, part of our emergency management program. And our insurance company, WCIA, was requiring it. And, and thank you, Aaron, for following up on that. I really appreciate that. AMI project update. So the contractor has about six weeks left. This is Keystone Utilities and then they'll be done with the majority of the meters. There'll be about 300 of them in hard surface areas that the city will be self-performing. We're getting a schedule put together right now and most of them are downtown and concrete and, and that sort of thing. So the boxes get a little larger, the concrete has to come up. And then we, we put the new meter box in, new meter, and then the puck is a recessed puck, so you can walk over the box. A lot of them are in sidewalk areas. So that's good. We have a plan on hoping to have that done late spring. We're going to put quite a few people on it where there's street crews to assist and that sort of thing. And diversified holdings is working on the police fencing there, chief. And so they've been out, their foreman's met with us multiple times. They got a good handle on the project. And Aaron, do you happen to know when they're going to actually be onsite?
They're in the process of ordering materials. I believe the start date next week, but I'll verify that.
Okay. Good project. There's a fence going in there with gates that open up and keep our police vehicles safe, 911 folks, all that. So that's a great project. Cota Street striping. So we got the center line put in, back to the way it was. We are working on parking stalls right now. We're following the manual of uniform traffic control devices. So you'll notice the stripes are going to Xs, okay? They're not, we used to have Ts there. We're putting the other side on to make the T into an X. The reason is, is so when people are going into the stall, you can see that hanging out in your mirror and you keep within stalls better. So it's a national thing, the manual of uniform traffic control devices. So we have that. They set the length of the stalls, talk about the ADA that's going in on Cota Street. We're putting that back in at each end of the blocks. So we have a plan put together for that. We're also putting thermoplastic down. So rather than paint striping, which we have to go repaint every year, we're putting down thermoplastic, torch down, because doing all the Ts and Ls takes a significant amount of time. And we're going to be coming back and working on the crosswalk bars and going from paint to thermoplastic on that with a goal to start converting the system over to plastic striping to save us time so our street crews can go do other things. We're looking into the county thermoplastic machine also and utilizing that where you buy the beads, you don't use torch down products. You actually melt it, turn it into goo and it pours out onto the surface and you've got to really watch what you're doing, right? Because it can get all over, obviously. So that's all for the manage update, managers' updates and I can answer any further questions.
I have a couple. So, let's talk about sidewalks. So we just adopted a 20-year, $26 million unfunded state mandate for ADA. Was this going to address some sidewalk issues over the next several years? We're also doing Olympic Highway North next year and that's going to address sidewalks up there as well. And then we're going to be doing some tree replacement down on Railroad, which is going to also do some sidewalk repair. So is there another plan to address some of the sidewalks that, that you know of?
Currently, the downtown street repair project or sidewalk and street tree repair project is going to go to bid in about a month. And so we should be opening the bids up sometime around the first of the year, Christmas, that sort of thing, with a goal to get started sometime in February on that project. It's pretty much going to take care of all the lifted sidewalks on Railroad, some of the side streets. And up here on Cota, there's, there's quite a few issues too. It all depends on what the bids come in at though, that we have some different bid schedules on there. If the bids are coming in higher than expected, we might have to take some of the, the trees out of the projects, project. We have them rated by the largest lift area to the minor areas. Like there's some areas where the trees just don't exist, a tree just needs to be planted, but the sidewalk hasn't been lifted, that sort of thing. So more to come on that project. In terms of overall, we do have a sidewalk budget every year. It's about 25,000 currently. It's not a lot of money, but I'd like to come back to council the first part of the year and talk to you about how to get some mileage out of, more of a residential sidewalk program where we work with the property owner and maybe share some of the cost sort of thing, if, if you're interested. We'd be more than happy to come back and chat with you about that. But it is a budget limited project because of the street repairs that we're getting into, that we have a lot of lane models to streets and we've got to keep the pavement condition index up. If we start letting that fall, we have problems there too. So a lot of it is budget and prioritization from council, which we've spoke to you about. And, you know, getting us off in the right direction, what you guys want to see?
Appreciate the answer. All right. Any other questions for Jay? Does the council have any new items for discussion?
Oh, I do. I would like to recognize somebody just walked in. She was honorary homecoming queen at Shelton High School. She's a 20-year teacher from Shelton High. And I don't know if you, did you want to say something about your experience?
Sure.
Can we have a minute or two for her to speak? Is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, city council members. I appreciate that. I just wanted to commend, I'm a retired high school teacher from Shelton High and I still support many of the activities. I'm in my outfit for chiming and swimming today. But I, I was very, very impressed with the quality of diversity that our students represented at the Homecoming Court. They, you know, I was very pleased that they welcomed and appreciated all the different kinds of students on that court, that Homecoming Court. I was very appreciative of that. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, did you get her name?
I'll get it.
Okay.
Did you get my?
I'll get it from my council member.
All right.
May I? Little thing?
I do have one question for Jay. We have heard repeatedly that we need ADA parking on Railroad. I know we will be addressing it on Cota, but what would it take to get some actual ADA parking on Railroad?
It would have to re-strike the parking stalls on Railroad, and it's likely a few stalls are probably going to get lost. We would have to put in similar what we're doing on Cota. The stalls get a little longer when you do that. And so the goal was, was to get Cota done, and then we would likely go and do thermoplastic on Railroad and put ADA in at the same time of that. And so we can make it happen. Cota is obviously on the backside of Railroad. It will get people started, but we would need to buy additional thermoplastic, and I don't have that budgeted for next year right now. So we'll have to talk about that a little bit when we're going over the budget.
Right, thank you.
Okay?
With some of the tree replacement, though, we could probably address that, because we'd be tearing up sidewalks, right?
We're going to be tearing up sidewalks, but not out in the park, we're not going to be in parallel parking stalls.
No, but we could be adding the ramps to the street, right?
The ramps already exist.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
In all of them, okay.
So we follow, it's called the Pro Wag Manual. It's the public right-of-way accessibility guidelines manual. And so that's what you follow for on-street parking. There's a whole bunch of different manuals out there, unfortunately. They don't, none of them is consolidated into one. But it does talk about when you re-strike roadways, what you have to do, and you do have to put ADA in. And since we're re-striking this roadway, that's why it was in the last configuration. It'll be in the next configuration also. So when we go do Railroad, maybe we start doing it block by block or something next summer, something like that. But I will need some additional funds for thermoplastic.
All right. That's it? All right. So our next study session is on the October 28th, and it's going to be a Mason County Local Homelessness Housing Draft Plan, being presented by a third-party company who did it. But it was organized by the county, and there was, all the nonprofits were actually in this three-day summit. So it'll be interesting to see that. And also, we have Olympic Highway North Design Discussion. Our next business meeting on the 4th, we'll have a Parks Meeting, and then our city meeting where we will be discussing Department of Ecology Wastewater Treatment Plan awards, a proclamation for Operation Green Light, which is our veterans. Our business agenda will be easement dedication, an alternate response team grant acceptance, and in our local agreement with North Mason Regional Fire Authority for peer support specialists, a resolution for authorizing Mason County garbage rate increase, a special unit building reclaim water tank project, busy day, public hearing, ordinance on adverberium taxes, ordinance on the budget. Action items will be what we talked about tonight, and it's also election day, so we will be here well into the night, it sounds, looks like. Right. So this meeting is adjourned at 6:53 PM.